We're live. Okay. Good morning, everyone. Today is Tuesday, January 24th, 2023. It's now 10:00 a.m. We're here for the regular session of the Hunt County Commissioners' Court. At this time, I'll call the meeting to order and ask Commissioner Martin to lead us in prayer, followed by the pledge of allegiance to our flags.
Shall we bow? Our most gracious heavenly Father, we thank you for this day. We thank you for this world that we live in. We thank you for the gift of life. If you will, give us patience and understanding as we take care of the business today. If you will, bless this court in Christ's name. Amen.
Amen.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, individual with liberty and justice for all. Honored Texas flag. I pledge allegiance to thee, Texas, one state, under God, one individual.
Thank you, everyone. We have Commissioners Hutchins, Martin, and Harrison present. Unfortunately, Commissioner Monroe has had pneumonia and out sick for several days and still not feeling any better. And he's still waiting to have his first meeting, I guess, maybe at the next Commissioners' Court meeting. But he won't be present today, and I'm Judge Stovall presiding over the meeting. Commissioners, you have the minutes from January 10th, 2023, regular session. Entertained a motion for approval?
I'll move.
Second.
Got a motion second. All in favor say aye.
Aye.
All opposed? Motion carries. This time we'll have public testimony. Speakers are limited to three minutes and should conduct themselves in a civil manner. The Commissioners' Court cannot take action on items not listed on the agenda in accordance with the Texas Open Meetings Act. Concerns will be addressed by county staff. They may be placed on a future agenda or addressed by some other course of response. Do we have anybody signed up? No sheets? Anybody wish to come forward and speak? Nobody's got anything on their minds this morning? Daniel, anything? No comments online? Okay. If not, we'll move on. Under Old Business, action number one, quarterly interpretation discussing current agri-life events in educational programs. Sarah Allen? I'm not sure how that was said.
It's going to be Sarah and Mary.
Oh, it's Sarah and Mary? Well, come on, Sarah and Mary.
We just wanted to come to y'all as we do periodically and give you an update on what's going on down in the county extension office. And Mary is passing out. These are our annual reports of our in-depth areas that we worked in last year. Certainly not all the areas that we served in Hunt County, but our focus areas that had been identified through issues in the county as priority needs that our agency services. And so I'll start and talk about the two that I did, and then Mary will briefly discuss hers as well. But Science of Agriculture, and I think many of you are familiar with that, that is an ag literacy program that we do each spring for all the fourth graders in Hunt County. And we have done this event for several years, but in 2022, we actually had every school district in the county bring their fourth graders. So as you can see on here, we had 991 students come through in two days to learn about how agriculture impacts their life. And we break those students into groups. They go through stations and learn about beef, grains, livestock, electrical safety, wildlife. They learn about 4H, healthy lifestyles, and they just get an exposure to agriculture. And on the back of that page is the impressive part. And we do a pre-test and a post-test with a section of the students that come. We do not get them back on all 1,000 kids, but we did have 725 youth do the pre-test and 458, so little over half, did the post-test. And I've pulled out just the top things that these kids learned. And one, and these are the things they learn in the stations that they go through. And so they learned that a 4H member can have a dog project. You know, lots of kids think that they have to be showing a pig or a steer, but it can be as simple as a dog or a food and nutrition project or a clothing project. And we actually had a 377% increase in knowledge from our pre-test to our post-test on that. So those kids are listening and they're learning. The next highest was that honeybees only make one twelfth of a teaspoon of honey in their lifetime, and that was like a 308% increase. And so they learned that 4H is open to all kids. And this one especially, I think, is surprising, but the whole reason we're doing it is that agriculture affects your life if you eat or wear clothes. And the kids who participated in our program had a 133% increase in knowledge of that fact. So that's huge. Over half of them learned they did not know that before they came. And Phillip, you're wanting to...
You can add probably five more people.
Agriculture affects your life if you eat or wear clothes. And so this is a great program that we do. We have a lot of community support. As you have time later, take a look at this. And we have many financial partners that help us with it because there are expenses to putting on a two-day event for 1,000 people. And then the Top Rail Cowboy Church lets us use their arena, and it's just a great place. And rain or shine, because last year we did have a monsoon on the second day of this event as we brought 500 kids into the arena. The second focus area that I worked on in 2022 was a multi-county small and new landowner program. And again, as you are all well aware, many of our farms are being cut into smaller homesteads and smaller acreages, and this audience really needs a lot of education. And I focused on this the last two years in partnership with Denton, Rockwall, and Collin Counties. And last year, we ran a five-month seminar where we met once a month for five months, April through August. And participants could come in person, or they could join us online, or they could buy recordings of the program. And so overall, we had 86 people participate in those seminars, and we focused on the basics of being a landowner. The first month was property taxes and what local agencies can help. Then we moved into resource development, marketing, what kind of insurance you need if you're an ag producer. We had a session on land management, how to build fences. Often, these people jump out and they buy the property, but they didn't do any homework upfront. Judge Stovall's nodding his head. And then pasture stocking rates. And then we do some on horticulture, too, the people who are putting up the high tunnels and growing vegetables. And then the last session was principles of livestock management, which is cattle, horses, sheep and goats, swine. And so we had, we did evaluations throughout the five months and got really good feedback on what they learned, but mostly the practices that they would adopt after attending it. And I will add that for this year, we have five counties. Grayson County has joined the group. And the first Friday in June, we're going to be having an all-day small and new landowner conference. We're doing that in partnership with Collin County Community College, and it will be held at the Farmersville campus. And we're running three tracks all day long, because our participants indicated they would rather have a big day than several partial days. And we're going to have a very basic, a medium, and a more experienced track that they can attend. So I'll be sure to let y'all know about that. And that's a great new partnership with that junior college as well, working with all of us and teaching this. And so all of our counties in this region are really facing that, where people have moved out of the city, purchasing their land, want to do these agricultural enterprises. So I'm going to continue another year focusing on reaching that audience in depth. So, thank you. Any questions?
Okay. Thank y'all. Good morning. Thanks for having us here. Family and community health is broken up a little bit differently. I have an umbrella that's called Better Living for Texans, and that's the audiences that are SNAP Ed eligible, low-income families. And so in front of you, you have a Better Living for Texas in-depth, and then the next one is a general healthy Hunt County one. So I'm going to start with the BLT, but I'm not giving sandwiches. So I wrapped up my very first year with the extension. This is my first in-depth summary, and so having it all together, it makes me feel pretty proud. And again, I'm grateful that you're taking the time to look at it. I sit down with my Healthy Hunt County Committee, and we decide, per the State of Health Report in Hunt County, what programmings would be applicable to address chronic disease, childhood obesity, and things like that. So in the front, in the top part, you've got the relevance there. My response to it, I did a walk and talk and a Learn, Grow, Eat, Go. The last time I was here in front of you, I had talked about that gardening program out in Lone Oak. So those are those two programs that I worked with, that Lone Oak Boys and Girls Club. There's, they're actually, I saw on their website this morning that that Lone Oak Club has applied for a grant to continue healthy lifestyles education with the club, so I fancy myself the inspiration of that. I did not get credit, but anyway.
You'll take it, though, won't you?
I'm going to sign it up. Yes, sir. And so those are those two programs. The third program that I did with this audience was at the library here in Greenville, and it's called Be Well, Live Well. It was a six-week series program aimed for newly-retired, independent-living adults. I showed up with a yummy nutritious meal for them, which they loved and got them to come back every week. And we talked about things about reading the nutritional facts label, meal planning, daily exercise, how those things can increase our quality of life. And so on the back, you've got the results. Again, similar to serious programming, we have a pre- and post-test sort of thing, and so that's how we get these numbers tabulated. With the walk and talk with the kiddos, there was 16 of them, and over the course of the program, we walked over 80,000 steps as a group, so that's pretty amazing. The Learn, Grow, Eat, Go, there was 30 of those children, 100%, so 30 out of 30 that took that pre- and post-exam reported that the garden program helped them become better at math and science. And so that curriculum is really wonderful of attaching the teaks from the T E A and correlating all those things. Another 100%, 30 out of 30 reported that the garden program made them want to come to the summer Boys and Girls Club, so they were very excited to see me when I was there. And then it says 86.7% of the participants were exposed to gardening for the first time. And for me, being a rural, being from Lone Oak originally and a rural environment, this was a shocking number to me that these children are not getting their hands in the dirt. So maybe this is a small stride toward that. The Be Well, Live Well results, there was 15 regular participants. I did have a few that came in once they knew that I was serving dinner, which I happily fed. Some of them needed that resource, so I was happy to give it to them. But 40% of them changed, reported changing their behavior of thawing meat on the counter. Do y'all thaw your meat on the counter? Don't be doing that. I learned that, well, through that, so that was a big thing that they learned. As far as food safety goes, 53% reported an increase in moderate physical activity over the course of a week, and about 40% reported that they've begun looking at the nutritional fact label as they go shopping and things. So good results there. I'm also a part of the Walworth Library Board, I'm a board member with them, and I just recently joined on the board with Drug-Free Greenville. And so I'm getting out there and getting with the community. The next report, man, I feel like I'm carrying on.
It's a whole year.
It is a whole year. The next in-depth is my Healthy Hunt County in-depth. And the three big programs that I did was a big, there was a big passenger safety certification course that our state specialists came in. They trained firefighters, ambulance member, servicemen, all sorts of folks, and they trained people on how to be certified passenger safety, seatbelt checkers. And can y'all tell I'm new? So that was a very successful program. I also partnered with our state specialists for the Watch Your Back programming, which is a drug and alcohol awareness programming that we do. We went to A&amp;M Commerce and addressed all the freshmen and sophomores at a health fair, and they did the drunk driving simulation, and we had great success with that. Lastly, I found a little sweet spot with the primetime senior activity group. I love those group of people. They are grateful for their partnership, and we did a master of memory course with them. So I was there for six sessions and educated them on improving their memory and giving the, they reported, 83% reported higher confidence levels in their ability to take steps to improve their memory function, talked to them how their nutrition and their daily prescriptions, their supplements, how all that can play into your memory. So that was very successful. I think that's good. Feel free to look over it. Does anybody have any questions or anything? No?
No, very good.
Okay. Thank you.
Thank y'all.
Thank y'all.
And we'll ride down the road, so if any of y'all want to come and visit us, please come see us. Thank you.
We will. Thank you for that presentation and the reports. All right. Commissioners, we move on to new business consent calendar. Entertained a motion for approval?
I'll move.
Second.
Got a motion second? All in favor say aye.
Aye.
All opposed? Motion carries. Action item approval accounts payable.
I make a motion, we pay the bills.
Second.
Got a motion second? All in favor say aye. All opposed? Motion carries. Approval of line item transfers.
Make a motion to approve line item transfers?
Second.
Got a motion second? All in favor say aye.
Aye.
All opposed? Motion carries. Approval of budget amendments?
Make a motion to approve budget amendments? Second.
Got a motion second? All in favor say aye. All opposed? Motion carries. Approval of payroll and personnel?
Make a motion, we approve payroll and personnel?
Second.
Got a motion second? All in favor say aye.
Aye.
All opposed? Motion carries. Action item number one, quarterly report for the Audie Murphy Cotton Museum, Susan.
Good morning. Thank you for letting me come today and present our quarterly report. Over the last three months, visitors have come from 32 different states. And internationally, they came from Ireland, Scotland, Israel, Germany, Finland, Vietnam, and England. So we're finally starting to get more people from overseas to come back over here. There was a total of 786 paid visitors to the museum, and a total of 900 people actually signed the guestbook this quarter. Our visitors spent 53 nights in loco motels, which included Comfort Suites, Holiday Inn, Best Western, Comfort Inn, Express Inn, Quality Inn, Super 8, and Hampton Inn. We had a couple tours. A homeschool group came through, and the Celeste 5th grade also came through. Our lunch break speakers for this quarter, in October, Charlotte Cook spoke about her book Outside Looking In. In November, meteorologist Gary Woodall talked about weather hazards. And in December, Bobby Sparks did a presentation on biblical archaeology and digs he's been on. So some really interesting ones. In October, the museum also had our second goofy golf event, and everyone had a great time. More people are coming, people are finding out about it, and the kids and the adults all had a wonderful time. We had a, we made this year a 15-hole miniature golf course out at the museum grounds, so we created all ourselves, and with each one having a different theme, and it was fun. In November, approximately 173 people attended Frontier Day, playing games, learning archery, making butter, and watching blacksmith demonstrations were just a few of the activities the kids were able to do. We also held the Cotton and Rural History Conference in October as well. For our movie nights, we showed Abbott and Costello Meet Frankenstein, and that's always a popular one, and Blondes at Work starring Glenda Farrell. This quarter, we installed a new temporary Christmas exhibit, which was a collection of Dickens Village buildings and houses, and I think that's about everything. If anyone has any questions, I'll be glad to answer.
Thank you, Susan. Anybody got any questions?
I do make a motion, we accept this report.
Second.
Got a motion second? All in favor say aye.
Aye.
All opposed? Motion carries. Action item number two, quarterly report for the Hunt County Fire Association. Chief Biggers?
Thank y'all for having me. Got the report, overall call volume. Staying pretty busy and steady here in the county. Last several months, have picked up an destruction fire, but we see that typically during our winter time, winter time months with the cold snaps. Picking up from last time I was able to come in front of y'all, I know Commissioner Harrison had some questions about missing calls, especially in the cattle mills area. I think that has been addressed, and I think y'all can see that that has been a massive turnaround. Cattle mills has increased their staffing and gotten a lot, 100% on, basically 100% better from where they were. There's been a new engine put into service by Lone Oak Fire Department. It is a used apparatus, a 2000s, late 2000s model, but that unit replaced a 1987 frontline engine. So that funding that y'all have increased, this has been going to amazing service in the county, replacing a 1987 frontline engine with a newer engine to serve the citizens in and around Lone Oaks area. There's also several ticks as forest service grants awarded to fire departments in the county. Two of those bigger ones include Campbell will be adding a tender water tanker to their fleet with a grant within the next year based on completion, and this is the way fire trucks are built. It's going to be a while before it gets here. And then Lone Oak adding a large brush truck, which will be a mixture of a wildland and structural firefighting apparatus to their fleet with one of those grants as well. So great news for the citizens of Hunt County and expand some fire protection. Any questions?
Yes, sir. What's the status on no reports from Quinlan?
I don't, I take what they're sent. We have everybody, we send out a Google document, everybody sends it in every month. We've never received, we didn't receive any from Quinlan.
Is that something that we need to get with Richard Hill and find out? Because I'd like to know why we're not getting a report from them.
Yes, sir. I think Richard Hill could reach out. I haven't, when I go and audit and I pull all those reports, which are what I print off and add as y'all's stuff in the bag, it's what all those pages are, is they're reports submitted by the fire departments. I just didn't have any data on, Quinlan did not submit, so I don't have anything.
We'll find out. Thank you, chief.
Yes, sir.
Any other questions? Now they entertain a motion for approval?
I'll move.
Second.
Got a motion second? All in favor say aye.
Aye.
All opposed? Motion carries. Action item number three, the Hunt County Delinquent Tax Collections Update by Purdue, Fielder, Collins, and Mott, L.L.P., Patrick McArthur.
Good morning, Judge Stovall, Commissioners. Good to be with you this morning. As Judge Stovall said, my name's Patrick McArthur with the Purdue Brandon Law Firm, and with me today, I also have partners in my firm, Doug Burnside and Patrick Woods. We did want to just follow up with again, as requested, to give you kind of a quarterly update on where we are on the collections. And so if you, I think each one of you has a packet in front of you. If you turn to the second page, I'm just showing you some of the numbers overall on the collections activity from July to December, and giving you some of the numbers on phone contacts. It's just a little under 1,500. Letters mailed, it was 20, almost 2,900 letters mailed over the course of that time. We made a number of address updates, onsite field inspections, talking to business owners about delinquent taxes. As a part of our services, we include bankruptcy services, and so we've had over 20 filings to kind of monitor and keep track of all the tax liens that are associated with bankruptcies, 62 lawsuits filed, 22 pay agreements. And kind of the biggest update I want to point out is your previous law firm had six months from the date, from July through the end of the year, to wrap up all their outstanding cases, things like that. So the wrap-up period for that time period ended on January 1st. So on January 1st of this year, we took over all those cases that the previous firm filed, which is 370 cases, active cases that were outstanding. So we've been very busy working with the district clerk to substitute into those cases and all the kind of paperwork associated with getting those cases transitioned so that we can take those over. And in some cases, a lot of, at least the ones I've seen, there was an initial filing, but not a lot of diligence after that. So a lot of these, we're going to be starting from scratch essentially, but we're going to take those on and move those forward. The other number I want to point out is the struck-off properties that were with Hunt County. You know, we started, we picked that up January 1st. There's 129 properties that were struck off to Hunt County, and so we're starting to get that information together, and we'll publicize that on our website. And one thing that I wanted to kind of bring up as maybe an idea for the court to consider is under the tax code, under section 3405, the court has the ability to authorize a public sale of these resale properties whereby we can take the properties back to a public tax sale and try to sell these for something less than what the minimum bid was before. And it's something we can prepare a resolution. It's something whereby we would recommend kind of a batch approach, given the number of resale properties that are outstanding, but something to consider.
Like no minimum bid, or we would still set a minimum bid?
We would recommend setting a minimum bid to cover some of the costs related to the sale, but we wouldn't have to set it to the minimum under the previous sale, which was the lesser of the appraised value or the taxes due.
So you think about maybe in a certain area or a certain town or certain whatever, you just package a bunch? If they were, say, all vacant lots, you'd package those together? If they were residential homes, you'd package those? Is that what you're saying?
Yes, sir. I think we would work with the court and come up with a plan, but essentially, we would create batches, and we could look at geographically focused batches to take to the sale. Yes.
I know in the past, basically, we've accepted lower bids in reference to it. In other words, it didn't sell, and then the people had evidently, and this might have been the section in reference to say, well, I'll offer this.
Yes, sir.
Are you gonna, are you still doing that?
Yes, sir. We will, we will post all the struck-off properties on our website, and people will have the ability to submit what's considered a private bid. And under that kind of procedure, they submit a private bid, it's going to be something for less than what the minimum was. So we would take that bid and bring it to the court for approval, and then we'd have to get approval from all the other taxing units that are associated with that property whereby the public resale process, we don't have to go through that process. We would take it to a public auction, and we wouldn't have to get other approval. We would just need...
We get all entities to approve of it, not just us.
That's correct.
Yeah. I'd probably, I don't know how the court feels. I'd probably like at least start with those over, we've had over five years or some period of time, pick a number, that's been sitting out there on the rolls for a long time and get them from some period back and start working on them that way, maybe? If y'all could work up a plans and make a recommendation about what that cutoff might look like, and we don't have to do them all at once, but we could do, you know, a part of the county or a section from one community or something and try it and see what happens is what I'd like. I mean, y'all think?
I can, now that we've got, now that we have the data, we can start maybe mapping this out and come up with a plan. I think the next step would be, we would need authorization from the court, but I can work with you, Judge Stovall, on the court to come up with a plan, and we can continue this conversation. But I wanted to kind of bring that up now that we have the number of struck-off properties.
And that's been one of our issues. We want to get this stuff cleaned up.
Get the taxpayer, get a...
Get back on the rolls.
Property back on the roll and the taxes coming in.
I would also like, for your information, reference to deferred, people that are deferring taxes. I know that you haven't been in there, you know, in reference to that, but I would like that to be addressed, whether there's an increase or decrease in reference.
Okay. Yes, sir. The next page showing additional collection activity, this is one thing I wanted to highlight. There's a large property, it's 3,200 Henry Street. It's almost four acres inside the city. This is something we're taking to our February sale coming up. It's a large property, you know, with base tax, P and I. It's a, it's a large property that, you know, with base tax P and I due to the county, it's around $24,000. And this is kind of a dilapidated structure than just kind of example where we're, we're very careful to, to make sure we're not taking something, you know, at this magnitude without a plan. And so in this case, we have interested buyers, so we're, we're confident that we'll, we'll get this to the sale and sell it and not have it struck off to the county where it's something all of a sudden you're responsible for. So it's a large tract, I just kind of want to call it out and something that's coming up in our, in our February sale. Next page, this is just the overall collection percentage number for the 2021 taxes. This is, again, if I can kind of remind you, you know, the taxes, the bills essentially for the 2021, 2021 tax year go out in October. It gets worked up until June by your tax office and then July it gets turned over to the law firm. So we're just looking at the 2021 taxes at the point in which it was turned over to us. It was about 96% that was collected. That 4% remainder is what's turned over to the law firm. And on the next page, you will see that sliver of, of the base tax that was turned over is about 1.3 million. And the balance for that as of December 34th, 31st was a little over 700,000. And so we're at a 46% collection percentage for the 2021 taxes at the end of December. And so, and then the next page, I'm showing you kind of a breakout of all the delinquent property tax amounts through the 2021 tax year. You see on the left side, the account breakdown in the form of pie chart that shows the breakout of the status for all those properties. And, you know, it shows in litigation, which I want to highlight again, that number, we've gotten about 75% of those cases that were transitioned to us, January 1st in our system. So, you know, that number may be a little higher than 14%, but that's kind of indicative of all the accounts that are currently in, that have active suits. Again, Commissioner Martin, the deferral number on there is around 36%. And then on the right side, I'm showing you an account breakdown of the dollar range for the, for the base tax amounts due, where you have, you know, there's a significant number that are less than a thousand dollars in base tax due. And, and we work a top down approach, so.
So the bad address, that you mean that landowner, we don't have a good address from anymore?
It could be, it's a two-fold situation. It's, part of it is return mail, you know, we're sending out the collection notices, it gets returned. We take that and we start to research and look for new addresses. But a, a large part of it is businesses that, you know, were working in Hunt County. They're closed, it's under the statute of limitations for us to work, but those addresses, they're not in the county anymore. They're somewhere else in the world. And so a lot of those accounts fall under, you know.
This is business personal, I think, in most of those.
It, the bulk of it would be business personal, but in, in some cases is the residential return mail type thing, so.
Makes sense.
And that's, that's all I have for the presentation. If, I don't know if there's any other questions I can, I can address.
Mr., you got any questions?
I don't have a question, I have a comment. I called Patrick a couple of weeks ago on an issue I have in my precinct. And one thing that I learned during that time is if property is struck off to us, especially out in the county, that we can, we can recoup some of the money to maintain it. And it's like the Esco lot that falls into my precinct that I've been maintaining. We can come back and add that money to the sales down the road, but we have to come up with a plan on how to, how to keep up with all that.
That's correct.
You may want some guidance, we may need to get some guidance from you, what we need to document, how to document that. And really all the entities need to know what their trustees, but for us as trustee, we need to know how to document that to make sure if money is available, we can get reimbursed for us taking care of it.
Maintenance cost.
Does trustee, if the money's spent on it after foreclosure, does that money get paid first or last?
That money gets paid first. So if it's a, you know, if it's a private bid, you know, and, and there's money that comes in as part of a private bid, something less than the minimum than the taxes are due, the cost associated with maintaining and those type of things would be paid first and then whatever's left over would be distributed or ratted.
Right.
But and then again, back to the earlier discussion about the public sale, you know, we, we wouldn't want to do a minimum bid. We want to make sure we cover at least some of the costs. So those, those costs would be something I would factor into the minimum bid for those public resales as well.
I need to get some kind of spreadsheet.
That's what I was thinking as well. It's, it's just something, a process that we, we can create and whatever works best for the court will.
Y'all could do that, maybe we could send you a monthly report of what we've done and then y'all can keep track of it that way? If that would work, or we can discuss it later, but something like that would make sense.
Absolutely.
What we need to do is basically come up through the auditor's office in reference to go before the court and put some money set aside for that and have a complete new department probably in reference to getting that back.
I don't, I think you just handle it by the.
Wouldn't we?
I would just handle it by the commissioner in that precinct, just do it through the commissioners. But we can talk about that later, I mean, but we can discuss it later, but I don't, I think we just do it through the precincts. We're not talking about a huge, I mean, if it's a huge amount of money, we might need to do something different. But going and mowing or going and picking up limbs or doing minor things, we're gonna have to go tear down a house or something. Now that might be a different ballgame, so.
Thanks, thanks for helping me out with that and I appreciate you guys on getting these reports to us, something we haven't seen in the past. So thank y'all.
Well, if there's anything else that you'd like to do differently or if this works for you, that's fine, but just, just let me know. We're happy to, to report.
I think it's a great first, first report and we'll, we'll keep going and get this communication a lot better than what it's been in the past. Thank y'all.
Thank you.
You bet, thank y'all. All right, entertaining motion for approval.
Report, so moved.
Second.
And a motion second, all in favor say aye. All opposed, motion carries. Action item number four, presentation by FEC, Greg, you want to introduce them, if you would?
Good morning Judge, Commissioners, Greg Sims, Greenville Board of Development. This is a project that we started working on about midpoint last year. We were contacted by a site selector that had a project in our area. And this is similar to project, if you remember several years ago, Judge Horn, when he was on, on here, we did a, a business retention project with Solvay Site Tech, where they expanded a building, brought in new equipment, things like that. Big company like that, they could put it anywhere, y'all know, in the world. And so they asked for assistance to help with deferring costs associated with expanding their business there on their campus in Greenville. And the Hunt County Commissioners at that time, Judge Horn supported a tax abatement for Solvay to expand their business as a business retention project. So this is very similar. This project is an existing company that is in the city limits of Greenville and Hunt County. The little difference here is this company is nonprofit, but it's nonprofit taxable. So they pay taxes to all the entities, you know, Hunt County, schools, hospital. Everyone gets, gets a piece of that taxes they pay. So, and their employment here is local and spread across a big area. Now, they came and asked for assistance for a possible relocation of a new project or business expansion of where they're located. And so we went through, if you've been following any of the city council meetings, we went through the Greenville City Council Planning and Zoning and City Council meeting, seek approval for a zoning change to expand their campus currently here. As some of you probably are very familiar with them because they've been here a long, long time. But they did receive a unanimous decision by the city council to expand where they are. We'll be talking to the city of Greenville as well regarding a tax abatement to retain this new expansion within the city limits of Greenville. As it, as Hunt County is concerned, this is, the ask is a, definitely a tax abatement ask. It's not today, you don't have to vote on it today, we'll come back later. But this is your first presentation of their expansion of their project. So we want to get it before you first and let you look at it first before we met later with you regarding the tax abatement request. And so they can, as you'll see in the presentation, they're, they have a very large territory, so they can locate this outside the county. So this could go outside the county. So we're not only talking about the Greenville campus, but it could be in other counties. But I'll let them explain all that and you can Q and A with them and their representatives as they go through this. And then John and I will stay later for executive session if anybody have any sensitive information, questions you want to ask of us. But anyway, I'd like to go ahead and turn it over to them and for their presentation.
Judge, Commissioners, we appreciate you allowing us to visit with you today. I'm Mark Stubbs, General Manager of Farmers Electric. Brian Green is gonna give a presentation about our project and what, what we're doing. And he's our Senior Director of Engineering and Operations, he keeps the lights on. There was a little bit of, when we went through the city process, through the zoning, there was a bit of concern. Some of our neighbors got, a couple of them got spun up about what we were doing. As you well know, there's changes happening along Forester, but it wasn't Farmers Electric. And through this presentation, hopefully we'll explain what we're doing. You know, the, the project we, that we're, that we've designed and we're ready to break, or ready to, to finish the drawings and break ground on, we're, we're moving on. But I'll let Brian go through this and then I'll finish up. I've got some, some points I want to make about, about what we're doing and what our ask here is, is here today. Thank you.
Thank you.
Good morning Judge, good morning Commissioners. Thank you for allowing us to come in today and talk about our project. We're going to, I'm going to give you a little bit of background on Farmers Electric. Not sure what you guys know or don't know about us. We were, we were originally established in 1937 as a merger of two, two different co-ops that had been formed under the REA Act. And so it was a tri-county co-op that was located down in the Emery-Raines County area and the Rockwall County co-op. So those two co-ops merged and became Farmers Electric co-op in 1937. So that's, that's kind of where we got our start. I'll get a little closer to the mic. Our original articles incorporation, you know, state that our principal office of, of the corporation shall be in Greenville, Texas. So we, we followed those in our articles, that's where we, that's where we've done business since, since 1937. The principal office where we're located today out on I-30, we've been at that location since 1963. Prior to that, we were in downtown Greenville. Nobody's left for me to find out exactly where that was, but I do believe we were in some, some of the buildings here downtown somewhere. That's the history lesson I have. In 2017, we had an.
He wanted you to know that I was around when all this was going on.
He's old enough to remember.
Yeah, I remember all of this.
Okay.
Go on.
Fortunately, so do I.
In 2017, we had an industrious employee who, who thought that we should be designated as a historical landmark. And so he wrote a paper to the Texas Historical Commission and got our, got us designated as a historical landmark, kind of just more or less signific, signifying the start of, you know, electrification in rural Northeast Texas. Little bit of statistics about us, we, we serve a little over 88,000 meters spanning 12 counties in Northeast Texas. Hunt County is actually the biggest county that we are serving with a little over 21,000 of those meters. We've got close to 6,000 miles of line and we're adding about 200 miles of line every year. We, we are growing pretty significantly. We spend 35 to 40 million dollars a year on our capex expenses. That's our new wires, new substations, new poles, all of that stuff. We, I can say, we have a really growing system. We currently have 184 employees. We did our last building project in 2009, so we've added 65 employees since 2009. And then in just last year, we added 23 employees. So we've, we've been ramping up that significantly. And I will say, we kind of took a break like everybody else during COVID. We went through 2020 and 2021 with basically no net, net new employees. We did have some hires, but they were mostly not new hires. We are projecting to get close to 275 employees by the year 2030. So it is, we are growing and we need to do some expansion. This gives you a little bit of an idea, this has been our, our meter growth over, you know, since 2005. I'm sure everybody remembers, you know, we had a pretty good economic downturn in, you know, '08, '09, '10. And then we came out of that and went gangbusters. You know, talked about COVID just a little bit, but we had, you know, we, we kind of shut everything down just like everybody else. We didn't know what was gonna happen. But 2020 ended up being the biggest year we ever had and then we followed that up with 2021 being the next biggest year we'd ever had. So this year is down a little bit, everybody's familiar with what's going on with the interest rates. You know, building has slowed a little bit, we didn't see quite the growth. We were, that, those 2020, 2021 numbers were, 21 numbers were over 10% growth, which is pretty significant in an electric utility. We're gonna be about seven, I think seven and a half percent for '22. So it's, it's definitely slowed down some, but we're still, our builders are still going gangbusters. You know, I went to a subdivision on last Friday and I guarantee you there was, you know, probably 40 houses in some, you know, area of construction and we just turned it on about two weeks ago. So still moving. This is our service territory kind of outlined here. So we run from basically Plano down around to, we wrap around through Wiley, Rockwall and Mesquite. Cover most of the southern part of Hunt County, all of Rains County, most of Hopkins County, a good part of Delta County. And that's kind of where the meat of it is, but you can see Greenville is kind of the geographic center of this territory and we like being in Greenville. It gives us good access down 30 to the west, good access down 69 into Rains County and good access, you know, down 30 east into Hopkins County. So, you know, it, we don't serve Greenville or the northeast part of the county, but it's still the geographic center of our territory. Martin, you got?
Northwest, basically, I know that there's been selling to other electrical companies in there. Do you foresee even expanding up toward the northwest or not?
No, sir, I don't believe so. The, the, we're governed by the, by the PUC and the territories were set, basically the lines were set for the specific utilities in 1976. That actually used to be a co-op in the, in that northwest and it was a, Hunt Collin was the name of that co-op. And it's changed and sold and merged through the years. And it would be difficult for us to do it now that they're an encore owned territory. Because of the deregulation issues, it gets pretty difficult. If it was still a co-op, I think there's some possibilities of immunity, but with it being a, with it being an investor owned utility, that, that gets to be pretty difficult. Thank you. We're, we're, our territories are pretty well set. So this is the, this is the track of land that we're working on out, out on the interstate. We had a zoning request that we made to the city. You can see the, the area kind of in, in purple is what was originally zoned commercial on the track we own. We requested those two hatch tracks to be changed to commercial. And then we had two tracks that, that go to Forester that we did not request any changes from the zoning on. We did, we did go to the city council, they did approve our zoning case. We did make some concessions with the landowners out there that those two tracks that are in yellow, that we're not going to do anything on those, we're gonna leave those zones, single family. We're going to, we basically had a little settlement agreement that we negotiated between them and us and the city council, that we're gonna leave those tracks alone and not do any, do any of our commercial operations on those. And we think this follows along with, this is the city's comprehensive 2025 plan, which we're nearly there. But they showed moving the zoning lines up, up, you know, nearly to Forester, leaving some kind of buffer there. So we think this follows the, the objectives of the, of the comprehensive plan the city has put forth. And this is more of the zoning stuff, like I say, this is the same presentation we did at the city council, but we had a kind of a unique situation. So you can see the tracks we have that we own are highlighted in blue over here on the right side of this. And so our tracks were, they didn't follow the, they didn't follow the parcels that we purchased. They were, they were cut in half and so we really had a, a really unique situation out there. Cause we bought some tracks that had split zoning on them and we were trying to get that really cleaned up. And so that was really the purpose of, of, you know, our requests for the city.
Notice this on the north side, if you'll go back to that one. Notice this on the north side, if you'll go back to that one, it was even in Greenville's to have proposed commercial zoning on the north side, right in there.
Yes, sir. Yeah, that was, that was part of our argument also is that we didn't, we're having a hard time understanding why we were getting so much pushback because this has been, been part of the plans for quite some time. This is our proposed site plan. So we have, we have three buildings on the property now. We have our, our main admin building that's, it's building A here. Building B is a meeting facility. It has our boardroom and about a 350-person meeting facility. And then our operations are run out of building C. And so what we're going to do is we're going to expand building C because we're really out of operational room. That's, that's our biggest struggle right now. We're going to build a new mechanic shop. We're going to move our fuel island around and some more store, a couple of more storage buildings and a new warehouse and then a new admin building.
Question on that proposed building C addition, you're going to expand it out the same way that it is right now, actually the same whatever decor type situation. Okay, is that going to be in this, would that also be in this proposal in reference to possible abatement as with the, the administration building?
Yes, sir.
Okay, thank you.
Yeah. This is kind of an artist's rendering of what we're proposing to look like. This is the new admin building. And you can see the, the building right there, just behind it is that existing building. And then like you say, there's that new, that new building going off to the east, new warehouse in the background and some of our storage facilities kind of in the, in the background there. This is just kind of a different, different view of the, of the admin building, but you know, we think we've got a good project and we think it's a, you know, we think it fits the, fits the needs of the community. I'm going to go through all of this, but these were, you know, I'm sure you guys were fully aware, we went to P and Z and got shot down unanimously at P and Z. I felt like, you know, we presented a case, we didn't get any questions, we were working with the city, the city planner and he said, yeah, this shouldn't be a problem. And we go up there, we present it and then three people get up and give public comments. And then it was like, you know, we vote against this and we never had a chance to refute it or anything. So, you know, we put this together for the city council to kind of give them an idea of what, you know, what kind of stuff that they had said and what our, what some of our issues were. But, you know, one of the things they said that our zoning request wouldn't benefit the community in any kind of way.
Say that again.
One of the things that the, that the neighbors said is that our request would be of no benefit to the community. And they meant the city of Greenville in particular. Well, I mean, it's just, you know, we're going to add 35 million dollars to the tax roll. So that's a benefit, that's a huge benefit just in itself. I mean, you know, they, we are a huge community partner. We donated, we've, and since 2008, we've donated over 863,000 dollars to various organizations in, in and around Greenville and, and Hunt County. You know, we employ 184 individuals. We're going to grow that number significantly. So we feel like we do add significant benefit to the community out here. You know, like I said, we've worked out the zoning issues, I'm not going to go into, into some of that. They complain that we're a 24-hour business making a lot of noise. I mean, yes, we do operate 24 hours a day. Our goal is to keep the lights on and we will do that. But very seldom are we in the, are we in the yard working 24 hours a day. We may have to come in, pick up a transformer or something like that and go put some lights on. But our work takes, our work takes place where the problem is, not at our, not at our office. There was some claim, some complaints that we had diverted some water and we're flooding some of those lots. I mean, look, we bought these properties, we cleaned them up. I'm going to show you some pictures of what we've done over there, but we've done nothing but clean them up. We haven't done any grade work. We didn't change the drainage and, you know, we're going to do obviously a complete site plan and drainage study on this. We'll fix any problems we have there. They think we're going to cut down all of the trees. We've got a, we've got a, we've got a big pecan orchard out there. We had to do a survey for our landscaping plan. So every tree on the property right now has a ribbon tied around it for when the surveyors went through there. Everybody out there thinks that's the trees that we're going to cut down because they've got a ribbon on them. So that is, that's definitely not what we're doing. We've got tall, bright lights that light up Forester. Look, you can go drive down Forester at night, the city has streetlights for Forester, you know. The Forester was already lit up, but when you look back towards the interstate from Forester, the only thing you can see are the text dot lights. They're on probably 150-foot poles out there along the interstate. You can hardly even see our campus from Forester. We have installed some unattractive fencing. That's probably an accurate statement. We're going to work with the city to do what is appropriately, you know, follows their zoning regulations. So we'll fix that. They said if this was rezoned, we could just sell the property and it'd be repurposed. I mean, absolutely that's true, but if we make a 35 million dollar investment, we're not going anywhere. They said that we, you know, the rezoning would increase heavy truck traffic on Forester. It's not going to be from us. We're not going to have any ingress egress over there. You know, you got a truck stop going in down on the corner. They're adding two subdivisions over there on Forester. Their traffic's increasing, but it's not from us. So we're going to decrease their property values. Look, you know, those property values have more than doubled in the last 10 years. I don't see that trend changing regardless of what we do. And they say we've demolished some nice houses in the neighborhood. Look, we removed some dilapidated structures that needed to be gone. I'm going to show you some pictures of those now. So this is one of the structures that was at 670 Forester, it's right next to Ms. Brunner over there. I've got a map kind of showing where it's at. But this was the house that we was, when we bought the property, this is what it looked like. This is what it looks like today after we've, you know, tore the house down and cleaned it up, mowed the yard, trimmed the trees. So we think that's okay. This was another house, this was the Burke's property at 722 Forester. This is a little better house, but it was still in bad shape, you know, riddled with asbestos. So we, we took it down and this is what those properties, there was actually two houses there. I only had a picture of one of them, but there was two, actually two houses on that lot. That's fine. This is the Moore property and this one kind of sits actually over on the Mar side of things. But, you know, it wasn't a bad house, same thing. It was a, you know, probably a 1950 model's house that was, you know, not in great shape. So we've taken that down. I'm sure everybody remembers the motorcycle shop, so that's set between us and the Dream Lodge. That was one of the properties we purchased. And then probably the biggest, the biggest thing that we've done out there on the site is, is, I know you guys are all familiar with the Dream Lodge, but this thing was a eyesore for this community for years. You know, there was not a day went by that there was not, you know, two or three different trips by the police out there to the site. You know, we dealt with prostitution in our parking lot, ongoing theft from those, from the tenants of that place breaking into our yard, stealing copper. It was, it was a wreck. We were very glad that that deal worked out like it did. You know, the DEACs that property, it ended up with the city. The city, you know, put it up for auction and we bought it. And this is, we, we've cleaned all those structures up, torn down and this is what we have out there today. So, and all those properties, we've, we've purchased 11 properties since 2004 and we spent just a little bit over a million dollars purchasing properties and doing cleanup. And we've, that's, that includes our demolition. A lot of, every one of the buildings had asbestos abatement. We had to do with, along with the clean air remediation. We did a whole lot of like cle, tree trimming and clearing out there. You know, as far as local organizations, we support, you know, the Hunt County Shared Ministries, Lake Area Shared Ministries, Community Seeds, Hunt County Kids, Boys and Girls Club. I mean, the list goes on. We do also participate with the Greenville Chamber of Commerce, Hunt County Fair, the Women in Need. We've been a sponsor of the Greenville ISD Iron Lines Solar Car Team, probably since their inception. You know, we had a, Betty Adams was a director of ours for many years and she worked at the school. Anybody who went to, went to school here in Greenville, I'm sure knows Ms. Betty. And, you know, she was, that was her, that was her really pet project and we, we supported that for a long time. As I mentioned, we spent over 863,000 dollars since 2008, you know, just here locally in Greenville and Hunt County. We also host some community events in our, in our meeting facility. I think, you know, for years annually, we've hosted the Hunt County EMS Planning Group. We've hosted the Blue Santa Luncheon. The Hunt County First Responders Banquet is another thing that we've participated with. And the Greenville Fire Department also comes out and they use, we have an in-ground vault that you can do confined space training in. And so they come out and use our training yard for the, for that, that training that they have to do. We work with the fire department here. We've, we've used our bucket trucks to fly the large US flag on Veterans Day and, and also at several funerals. We came out in 2019 when those tornadoes came right through downtown and helped, helped the Greenville electric system get their, get their utility back up and going after those tornadoes. We have training classes that we host that bring people in from all around the state, usually 40 to 50 students at a time. You know, that's going to help with the, you know, head and bed numbers. So we, and we think this expansion will probably increase the number of those training classes that we hold. Property taxes, so historically we've, we've paid in the last 10 years about two and a half million dollars worth of taxes. And those were just the Greenville taxes. But the, wherever the rubber really meets the road is, is what we expect this impact to be over the next 30 years. And so, you know, from a county perspective, you know, we've, we, we were projecting that the county would collect about 1.2 million dollars from, from this upgrade. With this, that increase is a 6.8. So it's a five and a half million dollar swing just for the county. The hospital will see 3.2. Greenville ISD, nearly 17 million dollars. You know, overall, this, this is a 34.2 million dollar, you know, tax increase for, for these organizations with this project going forward.
Could you do us a favor in reference to this? I appreciate this, y'all bringing this, but would you put your paperwork and get with, basically give us each one of these packets please, like the city?
Okay.
Thank you.
You know, one of the things that the comprehensive plan, they, they would like, you know, they like to see campus-type settings as part of that. And so we think that's what we've got here. Like I say, this is, go ahead. You know, this is the same picture you saw earlier, but like I say, this, we think this fits the mold of what the comprehensive plan is asked for. You know, we have an approved budget of 35 million dollars. We were hoping to get started in Q1 here, but we're, we're, as soon as we can get all of these approvals, this project is ready to go. And I'll let Mark wrap this up.
Brian's a Hunt County boy and I was born over here on O'Neill Street. I have a soft place in my heart for Hunt County. My wife's got a lot over in Union Valley and she's expecting me to build a house in Hunt County. We want to keep this here, but we serve in 12 counties. I work for nine directors and I've only got one Hunt County director. You know, I've got to count to five and they're business people, they're good people, good solid people who, who really take their role as a electric co-op director seriously. We've got Bill Samuels down in Kaufman County as our board president and also in Kaufman County is Larry Lane. We've got Don Phillips as a rancher over in Hopkins County and Marvin Fuller, a banker in, in Wiley. So we, they've got some great people. They want to do the right thing for the members. They want to keep electric rates down. And the, the problem for us, and which is Brian and my argument at the board, Greenville, Hunt County central, but a lion's share of our work is on the west side. We've got way more meters in the Wiley, Murphy, Saxon, Fornie, Rockwall, Kaufman areas than we do, you know, central and east. And so we, so it's a, it's an efficiency, you know, a lot of those employees that are, that are going to be coming on, a lot of them here that are now, that are now here and those that are going to be coming on. You know, we bring them here, we load them up, then we send them west. We could put our building west and they report there. And so we, we save a bunch of windshield efficiency time, but that's not our, that's not our primary objective, but that's just sort of the argument from a business standpoint about what makes the most sense. We expect this to be, you know, we've been on that spot for 60 years. We expect this to be a 60-year deal. So the tax abatement ask, you know, Brian gave you the, the 30-year number, but it's over a 10-year tax abatement. We're looking at a 1.3 million dollar increase in county taxes. And so we're asking for a 50-50 share. The county will get 650,000 dollars more in taxes. We'll pay, you know, we'll, we'll pay the 650,000. To the city, it's a, it's a, it's 2.2 million dollars. So we're asking, we're going to ask the city for a 50-50 split. Again, we, hopefully we addressed our, our neighborhood issues. We want to be good stewards. I think we have been good stewards. We've cleaned up the property. We don't want to hurt anybody on Forester, but a lot of the changes that are happening there are changes that, that we're not doing. And they're, they're, I mean, that is a, that's not a traditional typical residential street. It's a, it's a foreigner market road and, and there's going to be business on there. And, but we want to do our part to be good neighbors and good stewards. And really that's all we have and we really do appreciate you letting us, hearing us out and, and look forward to, to working with you.
Thank you, Mark. Well, I personally have one comment. I know, of course, I grew up not far from there, less than a mile from Betty Adams' house. Went to church with Betty Adams and her kids all my life. My dad taught school here 43 years and renewed Betty through schools very much. My aunt and uncle owned the house. The first thing y'all showed that you tore down, that was my Aunt Opal and Uncle Bloom Johnson, who were county clerks here for 30 or 40 years. I mowed their yard for years. So I know it well and the heads, y'all bought the corner from, they all went to church. I mean, I know, I know the history out there and it's been a nice, quiet neighborhood.
My mom went to, my uncle went to school with, with one of them.
Yeah. And, and I, and I do know, and I'm, I'm not here to batter y'all or anything, but I do know for a fact, y'all have caused some problems with the neighbors when you had to rope the course. Y'all put it right in a residential area. I had to even get involved in that 10 years ago or something to get it moved. Y'all were keeping neighbors awake and I still hear that, I've, I've got a buddy that lives behind you that he tore down his parents' house and built a new house there several years ago. He's been out there 69 years because that's how old I am, that's the house he lived in his whole life and he's still there. So, you know, he, you know, he does hear some noise. There is some noise there. And I know there are some drainage problems on a few of the lots. They're taking in more water. Y'all got more buildings, you're shedding more water. It's not being diverted. So I just ask you, please make sure you take care of that. I mean, they're our taxpayers, they're our, they're our citizens and y'all are too and y'all are important to the community, but, you know, they're important too. And I want them taken care of and make sure that they don't get infringed on. Anything you can do to keep the noise away by buffering it with a building that won't be, have a lot of activity or landscaping or berms or whatever you can do to, to do that, I think would lead to being good neighbors and you'd have good neighbors. I don't think you'd hear anything else out of them.
That's what we want, Judge.
There was a discussion basically and you said something about it, that, that one area, there will not be a road going back over there on that road. I believe that was, you know, that was, I think that's very important. I went out there, in fact, I've been out there twice looking at it. I had the same question about the yellow ribbons, are they going to cut them down because-
It's just no surveyors tree.
And so anyway-
Surveyors aren't very smart, taking into account where they work.
Yellow ribbon around a tree and like I said, that would have, that, I didn't think you were, but I was hoping not.
It pains me to even think about cutting those trees down, but I, we can't save them all and build the buildings.
I want to tell you something. I'm saying this right here, it looks nice. Y'all have cleaned it up. It looks nice.
I'm doing a great job.
I mean, seriously.
Well, I'm serious. We do want to be good neighbors and I was the city manager before I was a co-op manager and I know how, you know, that, that goes. And, and we, we do want to, you know, be reasonable and be good neighbors and treat those people with respect.
All right. Sure. Okay. Thank you. Thank you, Mark. And Brian, thank you.
So thanks a lot for letting him come and speak to you. Procedure-wise, so February 9th is our next board development meeting. So we will seek the board's recommendation for tax abatement for this project for the city and possibly the county. I'll hear more later. Again, John and I will be here during executive session, but if you guys give a green light and want to go forward with something to help out to defer the development cost, we want to retain them in the city of Greenville certainly, and also in Hunt County, so that's all, I just wanted to tell you the procedure. And then, we'll come back later in the month after our recommendation, like normal, we'll show you a spreadsheet, we'll give you all this data, show you a spreadsheet, Commissioner Martin, of what it's gonna be for the county, and then, we'll actually go through the proper posting of thirty days, you have to post it thirty days before you can actually vote on a tax abatement, so.
What I would like is a spreadsheet, not the day that we had it come through court, I'd like to see it early.
We'll get it early.
Goodness.
Yeah, we'll get it early.
Thank you. Thank you.
Thank you. All right.
Thank you.
Thank you. All right.
Thank you.
Thank you. All right.
Thank you.
All right.
Thank you.
All right.
Thank you.
All right. Thank y'all for the report, we'll move on. I'm gonna skip five for just a moment and go to six. Poor Jeanne's been sitting back there quietly through all of this, and, item six, moving the polling location for precinct four thirty-two from Wolf City ISD Middle School to Calvary Baptist Church in Wolf City. I know this is not gonna take but a second, I should've got you out here earlier, I'm sorry.
I regret I don't have a good presentation for all of that. It's hard to follow.
You learned a lot, didn't you?
I actually have. Good morning. This is super simple, I'm just here to request and offer any discussion that the countywide precinct four thirty-two polling location that's previously been at the Wolf City Middle School gym be moved to Calvary Baptist and get it out of the school facility. Calvary Baptist is located at seven eleven Crockett Street, it's just north of the high school as you go into Wolf City. It offers us accessible parking, plenty of parking, it's very accessible and can accommodate growth. Currently, we have anywhere from about seventeen hundred to twenty-two hundred, depending on the jurisdiction that would be voting in that, and I think it's important that we take into account any potential growth and get a consistent polling location for these voters.
That's great.
I will say, Jeanne went out there and visited with a couple of different locations, also obviously spoke to the mayor out there. We've spoke about this, and everybody agrees it'd be the great location for us to be at, so. There's no more questions, I'll make the motion to approve this.
Second.
Got a motion second? All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
All opposed? Motion carries. Thank you, Jeanne.
Thank you.
All right, back to action item five, an updating presentation from Freeze and Nichols regarding the Lake Tewocany Planning. Daniel, this is presentation day.
Thank you, Judge, and I think...
Yes, sir.
...this is getting me set up on screen.
Which one do you need to be on?
He's got the, he's got...
He's in, okay. He's gonna be there, I'm gonna go to there, I'm gonna go to there, I'm gonna go back to there. That should be it.
But it's not on there.
It's not on there, okay. Are there any fifth graders up there? Uh, it's be the laptop. No, it'd be the desktop.
Let me click the... Let's see if that works.
Oh, right here.
I'm seeing if that helps.
My garden.
Huh?
Yeah, Harton.
And I do have paper backups just in case.
Well, yeah, we may need them, unfortunately.
Okay, now we're...
Thank you.
IT not able to make it over here.
I couldn't get his U.S.P. order figured.
There it is. We're back up.
We were not up here yet.
Now, we're back down again.
Well, I had to change it from send camera to send content, when I send content, we get no content. It should say no content instead of send content. Yeah. That's what it's supposed to, and they're supposed to show the screen. There we go. Yay.
Yep, that's working.
That up?
Just give me a next lot or something.
Okay, okay, thanks.
Yep, it's up.
All right, well, thank you. We are here to give an update of where we are on the Lake Tewocany zoning project. Next slide, please. My name's Daniel Harrison, I'm with Freeze and Nichols, and we've been working on, of course, we worked on developing the conference of plan for the lake and updating the zoning regulations. And if you remember last time, back in, on November twenty-second, we came to you, presented the zoning text and the zoning map, and basically at that meeting, next slide, please, next slide, and next slide after that, perfect. And really, what we had at that meeting on the twenty-second is we talked about on the zoning map, we were pretty, we were good with the text, the comments were really focused on the zoning map. There were two areas on the far west side that we're gonna look at here in just a second, and the comments from the court were basically to, because those areas were not zoned by the Lake Tewocany Planning Commission or recommended to be zoned, but the question was to go back and to look at those areas for possible zoning, and that's what we did. Next slide, please, next slide. So, if you see, just remember the discussion, here we have the zoning map that goes with Lake Tewocany. You could see that the zoning roughly goes, the limits of the zoning can go five thousand feet around the shoreline of the lake. And we had talked in two different areas that originally what the Lake Tewocany Planning Commission was talking about zoning, and we were all in agreement with these last time, so this is just really a refresher. Next slide, please. There was, in the areas that were highlighted before last time, there's roughly two hundred properties, seventeen hundred acres. Next slide, please. And this is the zoning map, and what you can sort of see, and I have a laser pointer here, and this is how it existed currently, there wasn't zoning on this far north area, and we'll look at these two other areas here in just a second. Next slide, please. So, in the draft zoning map, we had added zoning to the north side, we had fixed some areas around West Tewocany that we talked about before, next slide. And really, when we say fix around West Tewocany, next slide, please, and then, next slide as well. And this is just a sort of zoom-in of the area. Once we had the correct boundaries for the city of West Tewocany, we're avoiding overlap on there, so there were some areas that were previously assumed to be in West Tewocany that weren't, and that we've applied zoning for, and everyone's been in agreement on what those areas should be. Next slide. And then, we went to the north side, we talked about this area and applying zoning in these new areas, and those were the colors, and we were in agreement with that last time, so like I said, this is just a refresher. Next slide, please, next slide, we go to next one. So, our two areas that we were talking about from our last meeting were these two areas that they were gonna leave unzoned, just because, we'll take a look at that, we do have some floodplain over there, but once again, we were going through this process, and now's the opportunity to zone it, since we're looking at the other zonings. Next slide, please. So, if we look at our first area here, we can see we broke this into two areas, just basically because this is all pasture, farmland, we have a little subdivision down here, so we have seven hundred and thirty-five acres, sixteen properties up here, and then, in our larger subdivision, our subdivision with roughly large lots on there, we have forty-four properties. Next slide, please. And so, when we turn on the aerial here, you can see basically undeveloped with the little subdivision. Next slide. We first go to, since we've done the comprehensive plan, we sort of look at what that area was sort of intended to be with our comprehensive plan, and so, that is low density, so forty thousand square foot lots or larger. Next slide, please. And so, at the Lake Tewocany Planning Commission meeting, we had the discussion, here were all the possible zoning districts that may be appropriate in there, so we discussed those. The short story is, we ended in ag, the recommendation would be ag for all these. Next slide, please. We did zoom in, you could see we do have a subdivision here with a couple of rows, and we considered that. Next slide, please. Because we went through, these are just the dimensional tables that go with the different zoning districts, so with ag, you know, what the minimum lot size would have to be, also the setbacks for a home in there, and so, we went through that discussion about what was appropriate to make sure that we weren't creating anything that was going to be problematic moving forward. We had that discussion, and we decided on ag as far as what should be moving forward. Next slide, please. So, once again, the recommendation was for ag, next slide. And then, so, this is, we moved further south, here's the county line here, so far west area, next slide, please. And you could see, we put the floodplain on here, so you're seeing we're dealing a whole lot more with floodplain here, and the short story is, all this area will be recommended as ag as well. Next slide. Once again, the comprehensive plan is showing that area, so ag would fit, be in agreement with the comprehensive plan. Next slide. Just a zoomed-in version of that area, and we had the same discussion about what was the appropriate zoning district. Next slide. And then, they came to the conclusion that that should be ag as well.
Thank you. I was hoping you all would say that. Thank you.
So, next slide, next slide. So, if we're, if we're good with showing those two areas as ag, and we don't have any other changes on the zoning map, what we could do is proceed with the public hearings and notices, and so, when those zonings are being applied, someone would get a notice, people within two hundred feet of those properties as well would get a notice, so that would be working with Brian with the notices, and when those go out, and we'd also have to time those up for the, for the, for the public hearing for the meeting, make sure that those are within, before the eleventh day on there. So, what we're looking at is either having, it may be a little quick to do it by February, so I was talking with Brian earlier, maybe these public hearings would be in March, so we'd have one at the Tewocany Planning Commission, and then you would have the final one to adopt.
Could you go back to the fifteen sixty-four, sixty-nine area? That intersection right there exactly, that was commercial, correct? Okay. Past that first place, that's a planted subdivision on the north side, it starts, you know, where those houses are. Okay, that right there continued being residential, they didn't expand that over, am I correct?
Correct. The commercial was just immediately around the intersection, it was around the highway.
Goodness.
The other was, I don't remember.
If you could, if you could try to click back a little bit...
The reason I'm asking is basically, I have a problem over there in reference to a person in violation, and that's why I was bringing it up.
Right there, go forward one, there you go.
I think the first, well, where the houses are on that, if you turn west on fifteen sixty-four, the first lot would be commercial, then thereafter, it's a planted subdivision. Goodness, thank you.
So, what's your question, Philip?
Well, my question was basically, we're not gonna turn that one lot into commercial, because we're having a problem with the person next door saying that they've already started putting a commercial, I mean, commercial business in there at that house, and I wanted to make sure that we were not making that thing a commercial, that I believe it was the second lot.
Yeah, and currently, in these areas where we're showing, so there's currently no zoning right now, so they could do whatever they wanted in those areas, so, but where we have our existing sort of businesses right now, that's where we have the commercial zone in there. I think there are a few homes down here along the edge that sort of just fit in that land use pattern there, but those would continue to just operate as...
They'd be non-compliance until something changed. If they changed the use, they'd have to go to commercial. So, it doesn't affect them, Philip, if, even if the zone changes, it doesn't change that they have to sell or anything, it's just, they're non-compliance to the zoning map unless it changes use.
That's why I'm saying, we're not changing that one particular lot, because we'd be making it legal for what they're doing. That's what, my point.
They're legal. They can do whatever they want.
They're on a planted subdivision where it says no commercial.
Well, that's a deed restriction.
That's a deed restriction, yes.
That's a deed, that has nothing to do with this.
And just sort of going back to sort of what the Lake Tewocany Planning Commission was, and thinking on this, is of course, you know, protecting Highway sixty-nine there as far as what development can occur, just sort of capturing what is going in, because we didn't want to create problems for the existing businesses owner, owners there as well, but, you know, also for, you know, for people here in the estate area and also the ag, you know, it's really the protection that they have that as, you know, things change here in the future, that, you know...
They get to say so.
Voice in the process, which they don't have if they don't have zoning.
That's right. That was my big push to getting everything at least ag, so it forced them to at least do something. And everything north of sixty-nine, a lot of it's in floodplain anyway, so, that's good.
And then, so, if we're, if we're good with the map as is, what I'll do with Brian is we'll sort of get together and see when we could, and if you're okay with us sending out those notices, because what we do, we'd send out the notices to, oh, I have the total in there, it's roughly over three hundred property owners, of course, there would be some more with them being adjacent to the areas to be zoned, but, so, I don't know exactly the number we'll look at, but that's where we are. So, if you're comfortable with how the map is shown, we can go ahead and move to the public notices and the public hearing.
And then, we're talking about us approving it sometime, one of the meetings in March?
Probably in March, yeah.
Yeah, okay. Y'all agree with that?
Yes.
All right.
Thank you very much, I appreciate it.
And thank you, John. You come in handy.
Yeah.
Yeah. All right, let's see. We should be up now?
We are.
We are.
Okay. I don't guess we need any action on five.
No.
Yeah. Action item number seven, recommendation from the Lake Tewocany Planning Commission to appoint Pam Reed as West Tewocany alternate representative on the Lake Tewocany Planning Commission. So, is this an alternate, not permanent?
This is the alternate. The mayor is the, is the actual commission member.
Okay.
And Pam Reed is the mayor pro tem of West Tewocany, so she would be the alternate.
I thought that's not, it's not janky, it's the...
Jim Turnipseed.
Yeah, Turnipseed, okay. So, he's the actual member, but she'll be the alternate?
She'll be the alternate.
Okay.
She'll be the one that we see more of.
Oh, all right, good. All right, entertaining motion for approval?
Or move.
Second.
Got a motion second? All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
All opposed? Motion carries. Action item number eight, MOU agreement between Hunt County and Texas A&amp;M Ag Life Extension Service. Hurley, welcome to Hunt County.
Good morning, Judge. Good morning, Judge, and Commissioners are here all this morning.
Great.
Good deal. I'm up here this morning to kind of go through a, an agreement that our agency has had with all the counties in the state since the early nineteen hundreds. A little history about agri-life extension. The United States corporate extension began in nineteen oh three, when Seminole Knapp worked on the Porter Farm, Demonstration Farm, which is near Terrell, and also the Greenville Demonstration Farm. So, the extension has kind of been in existence, really in this area since nineteen seventy-six existence. The difference back then, when it started nineteen oh three, businessmen and farmers put together some funds to help hire, employ that individual along with the United States governing the state. Here in Hunt County, records show that in nineteen oh eight was the first extension agent that Hunt County had with the extension service, and that was a John H. Garrison. He served from nineteen oh eight to nineteen eleven. And so, extension has had a long-time existence, relationship here in Greenville and also across the state, and applying or having agents out doing educational work for the A&amp;M University system. And we're doing work in basically four program areas, ag and natural resource, and I appreciate Sarah and also Mary this morning talking about some of the programs, program successes. So, ag and natural resources is a program area we cover, family and community health, anything you think in family and community health, four H and youth development, and also resource economic development. It's kind of our program areas that agents focus on. So, with the, our agency, we want to kind of go through to put a formal agreement together to all the counties to kind of, just to say, these are the things we've always been doing, it's nothing new, we've always had these things, but it's been, you know, just a handshake agreement over the years. And so, this agreement was put together with other judges and commissioners across the state, Dr. Ripley, my supervisor, along with other judges and commissioners across the state, two and a half years ago, three years ago, put together a committee to look at, what do we need to put together to help a lot of... County had with the, the extension service, and that was a John H. Garrison. He served from 1908 to 1911. And so, extension has had a long time existence, relationship here in Greenville and also across the state, and applying or having agents out doing educational work for the A&amp;M University System. And we're doing work in basically four program areas, ag and natural resource, and I appreciate Sarah and also Mary this morning talking about some of the programs, program successes. So, ag and natural resources is a program area we cover, family and community health, anything you think in family and community health, 4-H and youth development, and also resource economic development. It's kind of our program areas that agents focus on. So, with the, our agency, we wanted to kind of go through to put a, a formal agreement together to all the counties to kind of, just to say, these are the things we've always been doing, it's nothing new. We've always had these things, but it's been, you know, just a handshake agreement over the years. And so, this agreement was put together with other judge and commissioners across the state, Dr. Ripley, my supervisor, along with other judges, commissioners across the state, two and a half years ago, three years ago, put together a committee to, to look at, what do we need to put together to help a lot of counties understand the agreements we always had? And this document came to the existence in, from that meeting. This document is, I think, a four-page document, and it just really talks about what, what extensions part is, and, and applying and having agents here in the county, and what the county parts are. I think you have a copy of that document in front of you. I can go through it, you know, line by line if I need to. I don't know if you want me to do that or not, but I can. But, the, this agreement can be administered from one year up to five years. We really don't want to go over five years, and the reason is because courts change. And when there's new members on courts, it would actually, you know, give an opportunity for someone who may not know our agency to have a document in hand to kind of show, this is what we do. And, and this is what our agency has done in the particular counties we work in. And so, this document, like I said, it talks about what, you know, in a period of time for the county, talks about our, our agents or employees of the A&amp;M University System. We're actually housed in each county of the state, and they do those educational programs under the supervision of, I am the district administrator here in the county. And so, I supervise the agents. The county support staff, the county staff and office is supervised by the county coordinator. Every county has a county coordinator. Sarah, Sarah Allen serves as our county coordinator here in the county, and she kind of works as a liaison with the county court and the extension office. And so, she works hand in hand with us when we are working with the county on, on things like budgets and other type things. Sarah makes those contacts for that. And then it goes on and talks about, you know, the, the relationship that we have with the county and how, you know, when, when agents are actually here, there's always been questions throughout the state of, you know, well, the agents are here and they get part of salary from the state and also part from the county. That's very, very true. Our agents are usually D.S. degree up to doctoral degree individuals. A lot of them are, have been in counties anywhere between, like newly hired, like Barry said, one year on the job. I think Sarah's on 33, 34 years, I believe, something of that nature. And so, within that, our agency looks at making sure that we compensate our employees. The county pays a certain portion of that, the state pays above and beyond that. And so, this agreement that's in front of you, like I said, it kind of explains that relationship. Like I said, I can go through line by line if I need to, or if you have any particular questions about a particular part, I can definitely try to explain and talk.
I got a couple of points that just cleared each, so I'm not sure I'm understanding what it says. On, under paragraph two on the first page, second line says, allocations may provide county support for extension agents, blah, 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 and goes on. And then you turn the page, and then it says, the county will provide adequate, and it just listed, it says it may, and then it says it will. In my world, one of them mandatory and another one's not. So, what, which, what is it?
So, for, this, it's a.
Am I just misunderstanding what that says, or?
No, sir. The, the actual stand, the, the understanding of this agreement and our agency over the years, it's a cooperative agreement between the state and also the county. And so, the county does put in a portion of the agents' salaries, they put in support staff, travel, things of that nature, and the bricks and mortar part within our agency. And we have to have that cooperative agreement to actually have the agents here in the county. And so, if we lose one of those arms, one of those funding sources, then we lose the ability to have.
Yeah, I understand that. But, what I don't understand is why it says may one place and will in another. And maybe that's just my interpreting it wrong. But, when, when it says on the first page, allocations may provide county support for extension agents' salaries, staff, so to say, fringe benefits, telephone, internet service, office equipment, supplies, travel expense, staff and training, blah, 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 and goes over to the next page. The county will provide adequate office space, furnishing equipment, travel, and other operating expenses for the proper support of the facility, support staff in the county extension. So, on the first page, it says we may, and the second page, it says we will.
Right. And you're making, like, number three says the county will annual review. And that's, I, I think, and I don't, I wasn't in the discussion when they put this.
It had to do with the budget that were annually, we have a budget set up for this every year, and that's what that was referring to. He's looking at, says, you're, you're looking at number two, correct, on the first one?
First page, and you put, second page, and it says something?
Yes. Amount of funding determined through the annual budgeting process and furtherance. Allocations may provide county support, agents' salaries, other support, associated fringe benefits, February, federal and state law telephone. This agreement does not require the payment of any funds to agri-life extension. Will annually allocate an amount. In other words, that's, we, we do that automatically through a budget. It has always been, and seriously, in fact, I'm gonna say this, and you tell me if I'm wrong. It was actually a gentleman agreement since, actually, nine, 1911. And that was throughout the state. In fact, I questioned this several years ago in reference, where is it? Where is the agreement? And, in which this right here sets that agreement to where it's actually known. And it surprises me, to be quite honest with you, that it took this long in reference to do this. We've been in a partnership, and, and also, I'm gonna bring this up. Basically, this was a percentage in actuality of what was taking place under that gentleman's agreement. These, the only full-time person we have is actually the secretary. The other ones are paid a percentage. And the commissioner's court, through its budgetary authority, in actuality, every year, and I know in the past, and I'm bringing it up, in the past, we did not give these extension agents, basically, an increase as we did the other ones, even, even we give them the secretary. And that was, it was because we had the authority to, or may. And that's it. I've, I've read this very extensively, and I agree with you on it, but it says, we'll do this and we'll do that. And then it says, may do this.
But, it's, Phillip, it's, what is, all of a sudden, saying, saying we will do it in one place and we may in the other place, and it just, it's not, and I'm, I'm not, I'm not against it, I'm all, I think it's a great thing that we're trying to get into writing. I just want to make sure that it is saying what, what we're trying to say, and it doesn't sound.
Why don't we do this? We can submit, we can change it with your authorization. They're gonna accept the changes. So, if you have some better wording, please.
I don't have any speech here. I mean, what, what that first part is talking about is that the county will allocate, and then it says, what those allocations may be spent on.
That's right.
And it's different language from the next paragraph that talks about what will be provided. And so, it's a will requirement, that kind of shall do it.
Right.
But, that, the middle sentence, I guess the second sentence of the paragraph, number two, gives some wiggle room about where it can be allocated.
So, you're, you're okay with the way it's worked?
Yeah, I am.
Okay, well, that's fine. I just want to make sure, I want to make sure we're memorializing what we're doing, and it's not a misunderstanding when it comes to it. And then, it says that, you know, we'll provide all the information, what we're doing. I assume the state will send us what y'all are doing also, so we can compare. I know in the past, I've had problems with the budget of trying to give increases, and I don't know what y'all are paying your employees, but we have to tell you what we're gonna pay them. And then yet, it's, so it's a total package, and we're trying to pay county employees, and we try to keep them proportional to what they do, and I don't want to get those out of balance.
Right.
So, we need, we need to know.
I can supply you that, the, what, what our agency does. The, like I said, with our agents, there are some agents with little experience, some agents with a lot of experience. And a lot of times, the county's portion of the agent's salary, and this, it varies. There are some counties who may pay 30,000, but the agent may make 80,000 because of that's, that work and experience that individual has, has been throughout.
And that's fine, but we just need to understand and work together, as long as we can work together, that's, because that's what we've done in the past when I've called, so.
We can actually supply that to you.
Okay.
And I, I can get that to you directly to you when we leave, so.
Okay.
May I ask this, as we go through this, would you see if there's any other verbiage that we need to correct, that way we can give it to them and go through this?
Sure.
I would appreciate it.
Would you agree with that right now?
I, I think so. I would like to.
On, on him approving, or Daniel approving it, is that what you're saying, Phillip?
No, basically, he's looked at it, and if he needs to change, let him change it to her.
He looked at those couple paragraphs.
Okay. I would appreciate that. I would also address, you brought it up in reference to the annual, we have to do this in annual budget anyway, but if I'm not mistaken, the majority of the commissioner's courts throughout the state has made it to where it would be five years, but knowing that it can be dropped at any time within 90 days, am I correct? I would like to see this, if I may, be every year, you know, continuous up to five years, and then we look at it again.
It's continuous running out forever.
I, I agree. I agree, but they wrote it down, so we need to, I would like.
It's written to where it renews automatically every year. I don't know where you're getting the five years from.
Well, in, in the actual document, some, some counties, they want to put a little time limit.
Okay.
They can go back and review it. So, they put a beginning and an ending, and that ending, they'll go back and extra.
But, it doesn't have it in this document.
Correct.
So, you're wanting to put that in?
I want the five years.
Okay.
That way, we can look at it again. I would like it forever, but there were, there were some of them that were doing this for five years, so if it's appropriate, I would like that, that way we can move on.
I don't, I don't disagree. I mean, it kind of keeps us away from the tax attorney problem we had.
Well, it's up to you, whatever, whatever you, whatever.
So, other future courts will know, they gotta come back and look at it again, because once we're gone, then next people, the next ones that follow may not know anything. So, I think that's a good idea. I'm not opposed to it, but, so do we need to just table it and prove it next time with those, that revision, or?
And that's fine, yes, sir. I just want to bring it up, and whenever y'all bring it back up, y'all can just get it all sent and sent to us.
Okay, perfect. Is that all right, Neil?
Yeah, I mean, you can, yeah, just postpone it, you have to save a specific meeting, so if you postpone it to the next meeting, I can look through that and then add a five-year review period.
Okay, and you'll look at the rest of it at the same time?
Yeah.
Okay, all right, perfect.
Any questions?
Anybody got any other questions?
See, I had one more thing. I, I want to tell you this, and I sincerely about this. You know, this first paragraph says partnership. We have been in a partnership with y'all as long as I can remember. And I tell you what, it would blow your mind how many citizens out there, whether they gardening or whatever. In fact, we have some people in reference on the board here, and we got one of them right down there on the end, representing the county. But, what y'all do is great. And, and I tell you what, this should be a partnership from now on, and I appreciate y'all.
We thank y'all and all the support y'all give to our agents and our agency. And we couldn't do our jobs without the courts being involved in, let's do our mission for all states of Texas. We appreciate it very much.
Yeah, appreciate you, thank you. You bet. All right, well, so we'll table number eight till the next meeting. Number nine, full racial profiling report from that county sheriff's office. Any further comments, buddy, or? Oh, sir, okay. All right, entertaining motion for approval?
I'm moved, I guess.
Second.
Got a motion second, all in favor, say aye. All opposed? Motion carries. I just want to make sure you're not asleep back there, buddy. Action item number 10, the request to construct electrical power distribution facilities, which will be in right-of-way of County Road 3507 under normal stipulations in precinct three.
I'll move.
Second.
Got a motion second, all in favor, say aye. All opposed? Motion carries. Action item number 11, upgrade of approximately 4,571 feet of County Road 3520 from rock to oil sand in precinct three, county's expense.
So, move.
Second.
Got a motion second, all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
All opposed? Motion carries. Action item number 12, upgrade of approximately 1,432 feet of County Road 4219 from dirt to rock in precinct four, county's expense.
So, move.
Second.
Motion second, all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
All opposed? Motion carries. Action item 13, replat of lots 427 and 428 of Tom Sawyer's Crazy Horse Ranchos, installment number two, precinct two. Brian, you want to brief us? And then we'll do a public hearing, I guess?
This is a, a replat, and they have, what it is, is you've got three property, three houses currently on these two tracks, and they are trying to divide it up amongst family members who live there. Family-to-family plats, or family-to-family transactions typically don't have to be platted, but this isn't a current platted subdivision, so they have to replat it because they're changing the lot lines.
Okay. Well, this time, I'll open this up to a public hearing. Anyone here that wishes to speak to this issue, please come forward and state your name and address. Daniel, is anybody on line, Dan? Being no one's coming forward, we'll close the public hearing. Entertaining motion for approval of the replat.
So, moved?
Second.
Got a motion second, all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
All opposed? Motion carries. Action item 14, the final plat for Farmersville Ranch Estates, Phase Two in Precinct One.
And actually, this has Phase Two on it because, well, I have Mondays two. This should be Phase One. So, this is a, they're wanting to do four lots up front that front the existing county road. Then Phase Two will have a new road built and have the lots on back end behind it. We, we have plans already in, being reviewed for the, the Phase Two, and we're, we're moving forward on that, but they're wanting to, and get these front ones that are, that already have access, they're wanting to get them going.
Okay.
Now, they are one-acre lots. These cannot receive septic permits until the order is changed with the TCEQ. If, for some reason, the TCEQ order does not get changed, if something squarely happens, the developer on the back row here is aware that he will have to replat these four lots into 1.5 acre lots.
So, we need to make a motion to approve the plat and could change it to Phase One and make it subject to TCEQ, changing it, the septics to one acre? Daniel, is it?
Yes. That's the best way to handle that.
Is that, that'll cover it?
Yeah.
All right, any questions?
And Brian, refresh my memory, we still need to escrow funds for the road upgrade.
Yes, I need a.
The developer's working with us, so they're not at fault, but we've just been working on the surface.
Yes, I need the amount for the escrow on the, on the road.
We will need to be contingent upon that as well.
All right, so I, entertaining motion for the approval of the final plat of Farmersville Ranch Estates, Phase One in Precinct One, on condition that TCEQ approves our request for septic permitting, on-site septic sewer services on one-acre tracks, and the developer puts up the escrow money for the upgrade to the road.
Yes.
Make a motion.
I made, I need a motion.
Mark, mark.
I'll move.
Second.
Second, all right.
Bruce, you want to throw something in there too?
Throw it in there.
Go in the party, come on. All right, got a motion second, all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
All opposed? Motion carries. Action item number five, fifteen. No, I need some water. The final plat of granol addition in precinct two.
This is a pretty simple plat. We, there's actually a platted subdivision across the road. We don't get a whole lot of these, so they've already dedicated right-of-way. So with the additional right-of-way that this plat's dedicating, we've got, we've got full right-of-way on at least a very short section of this road, but one of the first times it's happened. It's a pretty, pretty basic plat, guys. Everybody's got frontage, and there's no issues with the road. It's down in the far southwest corner.
Entertaining motion for approval.
So moved.
Second.
Got a motion second, all in favor say aye.
Aye.
All opposed, motion carries. Action item number sixteen, the final plat for Bowles Estates, phase two in precinct four.
This one actually came through a couple of weeks ago with four lots on it. He has since changed his mind, he's just wanting to do these next two lots instead of all four, so we may get a phase three with the other two lots later. I don't know.
All right.
This is all tech stop frontage, and he has approval from tech stop for driveways.
All right, entertaining motion for approval.
So moved.
Second.
Got a motion second, all in favor say aye.
Aye.
All opposed, motion carries. Action item seventeen, the final plat of Louis Chevalier, second edition. Is that how you say that?
Chevalier.
Chevalier. Well, I can't speak French. All right, precinct four.
This is a pretty simple subdivision, lots of frontage, large tracks. They came through and cleared out the right-of-way, and it's nice and wide open, and the road's beautiful, and it's...
Of course, the road's beautiful.
It's up there in precinct four.
Yeah.
Make a motion to approve.
Second.
Got a motion second, all in favor say aye.
Aye.
All opposed, motion carries.
And now I have a presentation, if I could get... I'm kidding you.
You're going to get fired if you're not careful.
I'm leaving, going alone.
All right, Daniel, anything on the line?
Yeah.
Okay. Any further business? Not, I'll entertain a motion to, your honor, to go to executive session items of one through four.
So moved. Second.
Got a motion second, all in favor say aye.
Aye.
All opposed, motion carries. We're in executive session at 11:50.
All right, let's see where we are.
We're up.
All right, it's 12:36, we're back in regular session. Is there any business before the court today? Any other business being none? I entertain a motion to adjourn.
No move.
Second.
Got a motion second? All in favor say aye. All opposed? We're adjourned at 12:36.
Hey Daniel.
Yes.
You have a copy of those four deals that you -- or do you have one?
Uh, of the four auctions?
Yes.